Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're a couple minutes late. We had some technical difficulties. I'd like to call for a roll call and let it be acknowledged that all council members are here.
Hi. Is this working?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, roll call. Councilmember Weinsdorf. Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Goddard.
Here.
Mayor Kohler.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda. And this is a special Fairfax Town Council meeting, so we won't be having open time. Next week, we will have a regular meeting. So with that, I'd like an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, that, we will go ahead and get started. And what I'd like to do is, maybe I'll quickly go over what we plan to do. Unfortunately, I don't think it's in here. Bish.
If you follow the staff report, it just kind of lays out the process, unless you want me to share what I believe the process to be.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. So, item tonight, obviously, is the appointment of a candidate to fill the vacant term of Councilmember Bragman's seat. And if you select a candidate, then we would do the oath of office tonight. And so, as just a little background, on September 14th, the council interviewed four applicants.
January.
Oh, January. What did I say? Oh, my, pardon me. September. Wow, okay. Anyway, January 14th, the council interviewed four candidates for the vacant seat. You narrowed it down to two candidates who are here this evening. That would be Mr. Ackerman and Mr. Lacks. At that time, the council also allocated 30 minutes for each candidate for additional question and answers at this meeting this evening. So what we're proposing is that the order of the candidates could just be selected at random by the town clerk, similar to what she did for the original four. That time, then, the council would ask the other candidate who's not being interviewed first to voluntarily leave the room. When you're done with the interviews of the first candidate, then they would switch. One would leave, one would come in. Then, at the conclusion of the second interview, then, we would suggest, then, that everyone would come back into the room and that you consider, at that time, comments, public comments, on the item this evening. And then, at that time, we would suggest, then, the council move into its discussions. One caveat, we would suggest, is if a motion is made and it happens not to pass, then we would suggest the council just continue its discussions until appointment can be made. And if an impasse is actually reached, then, at that point, we could share with you what the options are to the council. So with that, that's the staff report.
So, a quick question. So, the interviews consist of any questions we'd like to ask each candidate, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. So clerk, Michelle, oh, okay, go for it. He's number one, then? Okay. So, just a reminder, we're gonna leave a total of a half an hour for any questions and answers. So, while that does seem like a lot of time, it would be a good idea to be as succinct as possible, while being as complete as possible. So, with that, I'd like to start off and ask members of the council if you'd like to ask questions. David?
So Peter and I had the opportunity to meet last week to talk about the whole range of issues. And I didn't just want to ask, I have two questions. So I didn't want to just come by and, obviously, just say, "Gotcha, and here are my two questions." So I gave them the chance, you know, a week's time to think about it. So, let me just launch to those two questions. The first one, and both of them relate to pretty much all of everything we did in the last three quarters of 2014. As I seem to have stated endlessly, the general plan process provides the opportunity to be amended by the people four times a year, every year, forever. And my belief, then and now, is that that's the process by which you go about amending the general plan. You take it to the Planning Commission, you take it to the council, you get the people's buy-in after all, in my view. The general plan is the people's constitution for purposes of zoning. So my first question, Peter, is when the community has a disagreement, any member of the community has a disagreement with the general plan, do you -- (bell dings) Okay. Do you believe that we should go forward with the statutory general plan amendment process four times a year, go through the Planning Commission, council, have community hearings, all that sort of stuff that we do, I think, very, very well in this town? Or go through the, what I would call, the nuclear option of the referenda?
Okay, thank you. Microphone's working. Well, I think it's always preferable to go through the processes that are set forth and allow for more orderly kind of deliberation and discussion of issues. That's obviously a lot more preferable than, you know, what happened with the referendum and so forth. And I think what happened with the referendum, too, also reflects the reality that, you know, for eight years, I sat on the Planning Commission and we worked, probably for about six years, revising the general plan. And probably, the total number of people that came to all of the meetings is less than what's in the room now. And that's somewhat human nature. So it's certainly preferable that people participate, but there's also an importance to be, when the community does finally come forward, even if it's not through the regular processes, to pay attention to the community. And although the whole referendum process presented a difficult challenge for the council, in looking at it, I think the council did a pretty good job of, you know, going through that awkward process. And in, the end result was actually not so bad, to look at the errors in the general plan, to correct those. I think the council wisely chose to rescind ordinance 778 and instead move forward in a more orderly consensus-building way, rather than kind of go through the brinkmanship of an election. So, I would prefer that people be more actively involved early on, but as the case may be, sometimes that doesn't happen. Sometimes people don't really queue in to an issue until the last minute.
I think you actually even just touched upon my second question, of course anticipating it, which was, if you had been sitting up here and, as unpleasant as it was, for most of last year, and you faced the dilemma that we faced, of dealing with, we have a general plan, we have a housing element, it's been adopted, the, in fact, guided by John and your, the other applicant this evening. And at the end of the day, the people had decided, and not just a few scattered folks in the room, but the entire Planning Commission, 14 years in the making, the entire Town Council, voting all unanimously on, well, the whole general plan, but that included the specific provisions dealing with moving from CH to CC. Now, it would be entirely unfair, and I would never, just as we see when they interview Supreme Court justices, we don't ask them about a future vote, but I can ask you about how you would have voted on something in the past, particularly the recent past. And so, my question is, how would you have voted on the repeal of 778, which, in effect, as of now, pulled back from our compliance with the adopted housing element?
Thank you. It's a good question. Looking at it, under the totality of the circumstances, I actually think the council did the right thing to vote to rescind, given the competing referendum. We would've been facing a very divisive and counterproductive election. I think that was sort of the wisest and most efficient and least divisive path. And it also allowed for corrections to be made to the general plan, which, there were several significant errors in the general plan which are being amended, and now, the Town Council and Planning Commission can look at enacting an ordinance with a corrected general plan, which is ultimately a better outcome for the town overall. So, a very difficult process for the council to go through. But in retrospect, I would say that, given that challenge, the initial outcome of voting to rescind, avoiding that divisive election, correcting the general plan, and then being able to move forward with deliberate attention to the, bringing forth a new ordinance, correcting those problems, is a better outcome. So, I commend everyone for really taking some wise actions in light of that.
Well, while I may disagree with you, I want to thank you for a thoughtful set of answers.
Thank you.
Renee?
So, if I may, I'd like to just dive into the weeds of that, just a little bit.
Sure.
Because, as I heard you start, you said that preferable to ending up where we ended up, it would have been to bring more people to the process, more than a collective number that sits here right now through a 14-year-old process, I would hope. What, you know, it's easier said than done. So to bring people to a process where, I don't know, maybe people believe they had nothing at stake, or that their voice didn't matter, how are we going to change that? How are we gonna shift the paradigm in order to bring people to the process so that we don't continually hit the wall in the 11th hour when people start to feel like, "Okay, now it's our turn"?
That's a difficult challenge, Renee, and part of it is human nature. People oftentimes just don't pay attention to something until that 11th hour, or until it might have what people see as some consequence. That being said, you know, I think it would be good to try to do more outreach to people. I don't know if the webpage could be improved to talk a little bit more about what planning issues are coming forward. It's a difficult process to envision, okay, how do we get people engaged more early and more often? I think having advisory committees like the G-PAC is good for getting people initially involved. But when you get down to, you know, those long, laborious Planning Commission meetings, you know, at 10 o'clock on a Thursday night, you know, unfortunately, people just don't see the value of investing their time early on in the process to get engaged at that stage. So, it's a challenge, for sure.
John?
Okay. So, keeping with the subject, say it is the 11th hour, and, you know, you've got, you know, there's a fire to your feet in terms of, like, "Oh, we've gotta get this", you know, there's state deadlines and things like that, hoops to jump through. But there is a lot of questions from the public, and, you know, not necessarily all the information being digested all the way, but it's coming down to the wire. How do you deal with that?
Well, it's a difficult balance. It's important to take in input from the town and from the community, and to weigh that. I think that's important. And even if it means the process gets a little delayed, and you have to sort of weigh it in each situation. In this particular instance, you know, the referendum came forward and that forced things to head. There was an initial vote before the referendum. The referendum came forward and, you know, that raised the stakes considerably. It's, I think it's a case-by-case basis. At some point, you do have to exercise your judgment and say, you know, "The issues are clear enough, and the decision that the town has to make is important enough to be made timely," that you, sometimes you do have to cast that vote, and even if it's unpopular or not supported by the entire community. So it's a case-by-case basis, and that is one of the difficulties, I think, that everyone faces up here and that I would face, or that Bruce would face. But that's something I can live with. I can make the best decision I can and live with it, move on, and accept the consequences. And that's one of the harder things about governance, I think.
So I have a question for you, but first, I have a comment. I think you've mentioned a few times that people waiting to the 11th hour may be a human nature. And when I was getting my master's thesis, even though I'm a scientist, my advisor made me read a book, a philosophy book, called "Reconciling Man with the Environment," and that was exactly what it was about, is people wait until dire circumstances, kinds of things that we're seeing with climate change, we're already here. But that's just an add-on, that I always resented having to read that, but it's come back to me many times. And so, I would like to bring you back to something that happened a number of years ago, and you may be familiar with it, having been on the Planning Commission, but if not, you could just treat it as a hypothetical scenario. So, a number of years ago, before I was on the council, there was something called "A Proposal for a Mixed-Use Zoning Ordinance" in the area where now Good Earth stands. And that was proposed for some kind of housing that would be about, I think it was about 35 feet high, right in that location. And the council had a charrette and a number of meetings on it. And eventually, that proposal did not go forward for various reasons. But maybe just taking yourself, even if you are familiar with the details of that, I'd like to hear more about what issues you think should be considered, should something like that occur? Let's assume that Good Earth is gone, and somebody wants to put something 35 feet high, or something of that nature, in that area. What kinds of things would come to mind that might be issues of concern to members of the public, if not you personally?
Thank you. Well, I was involved in that process, and we worked very hard to try to draft a mixed-use overlay zone that would try to accomplish a number of things, including dealing with mandates from HCD to create more opportunities for housing. And I think where people really bristled was the idea of a third story. And that, you know, proved to be very unpopular, and I think that kind of derailed the whole process. I think, you know, in attempting to implement a really big zoning change like that, you're gonna get a lot of input from the town, a lot of resistance, and, you know, that does need to be listened to. With the mixed-use overlay zone, what we were trying to do was, you know, create more housing. And I think we learned an important lesson, that people are very resistant to allowing third-story development in the commercial zone.
And what were the issues with the third-story development? That, even if, you don't have to cite back what the issues were, but what are the things that came to your mind, knowing the code, and, you know, what would be of concern with a third story?
Well, what we were, what the, what the Town Planning Commission was trying to do was to create opportunities for actually putting in more affordable housing by allowing something akin to the density bonuses that HCD talks about, by allowing, if the project had a certain percentage of affordable housing, to go to a third story, which would be about another seven or eight feet above, you know, what a two-story structure could be. And so, in trying to fashion that as a sort of an option, if a project did have sufficient percentage of affordable housing, that's where we came up with that concept of potentially allowing a third story along, for that property. And it was an interesting experiment in trying to work with the constraints of meeting all these different goals. And for whatever reason, there was a lot of resistance, particularly to the idea of having a third story. So that's something that, you know, would need to really be looked at carefully, I think, having had the benefit of that sort of public reaction to bringing that forward in the past.
Okay, thank you. Other questions of the council? John?
Okay. We can shift gears a little bit away from housing right now, maybe. What happens if there's, you know, a minority of the community who's very interested in something? You know, the majority isn't there, but they, you know, have a legitimate concern, may or may not be something that you'd agree with. You know, I can take the example of smart meters, which are, you know, who says what the majority of the people in the town is, that the CPUC has recently ruled in that in favor of, you know, PG&E's position, basically, and, you know, which is charging people for the extra thing. And that charge has not come here, and I think it's, that one may be a done deal. But there's still the case that there's gonna be a number of people who are upset about What do you see the council's role in that situation?
In that particular issue of smart meters, or just in general?
Well, you could use that as one example, or you could use another example if you choose to.
Well, I think it's important to, there's always, my philosophy is that you need to balance as much as possible the needs of the community and the input of the community. And obviously, the more people that have a strong feeling about something or against something, you have to consider that. That's what democracy is. And, you know, as elected officials, you know, it's, I think, healthy for elected officials to listen to that and to try to be responsive to that. Balancing that, though, you do have to make the tough decisions. And there are gonna be some decisions that are gonna be divisive and unpopular. And you have to make the best decision you can, balancing all those factors. And where possible, it's best to try to, you know, see where the consensus is, or see perhaps where you can address some of the concerns of the people that are, you know, opposed to the position that you're taking. But ultimately, you do have to, thank you, are we on now? You do have to make a decision, the best decision you can, and realize that sometimes you're going to have a group of people that are not, not gonna be happy no matter what you do.
Other questions, Renee?
Yeah, I'm gonna actually read this, because I'm hoping that I can get it succinct enough that it will elicit a response. So, we talk a lot about the character of our town. And during the whole situation that we were in for the past year, we talked about how, in order to preserve the character of our town, we were losing the characters of our town. And so, given that we do know that change is occurring at light speed, and that the generation coming up after us, I have teenagers, so I know this quite intimately, is living in a very different world, at a very different pace, and may not really be in touch with the character of the town that we are vehemently protecting. How do you incorporate sort of a more, you know, "Let's protect and not change things because we'll lose our values, and we'll lose our community, and we'll lose our bold decision-making legacy," with the needs of the young families, the new demographics, the fast pace of life, and the cost of housing here? How do we actually plan and incorporate that? Because that is the future.
Sure. I, my vision in terms of creating more housing for Fairfax is, I would like to see actual affordable housing created. Can you hear me now? Sorry. And so, in terms of what, how to best go forward with that, with creating that, I think that we should be looking towards opportunities for nonprofit or subsidized housing to get built as much as possible, because really, that's what's going to create as much housing opportunities for affordable, low-income housing in our town, because we really don't have that many sites to develop. And I think, too, that an emphasis on smaller units is a good approach, more modest housing, especially if you're talking about in the commercial highway, which may be, very soon become the commercial central. And by having smaller units, that would tend to make more affordable units. And I think those are some of the tools.
Okay, can I, I'm sorry, I feel like I threw you back into the ditch. But I, what I wanted to hear a little bit about was the fact that the world is completely changing, and some of our character is now being redefined by a new world. So what I want to know is, given that only 8% of the eligible voting youth came out to vote in the November election, they are very disenfranchised, and it's their world, really. And we're here to teach and guide, but we need to do something in our town planning and policymaking and engagement of the public. And what is it that you propose we could do without losing our open space, and without losing some of the values and the things that we pride ourselves on that make us this really amazing town?
Specifically to, do what, encourage more youth participation?
Well, it's youth participation, but it's also, we hold tight to our values, and our values are written from a time ago. And how do we keep them alive, but also bring the next generation in? The young families here, our demographics have changed drastically. So I want to talk about how we're going to keep up with the present that's upon us.
Well, I think it's important to create space for community, and I think Fairfax does a pretty good job of that. Having a small-town character, too, also helps foster community. And as young people grow up, and I've had the fortune of, you know, seeing my own daughter, seeing other young folks now in their mid-20s grow up, they do tend to become engaged the more that they have a sense of community. That being said, it is a very difficult time for people that are 25 years old. It's a difficult job market unless you've got a certain narrow range of skills. And there are economic forces far beyond our control that are really tearing apart the fabric of our society, you know, America at large. What we can do as a small community, I think, is to try to foster community, you know, after-school programs, finding, you know, finding ways, cultural programs, things like that. I think those are things that the town can do. But it's a difficult, we face some very difficult and disruptive changes in our economic and social fabric and environmental fabric. And, you know, I think we are in for some difficult times.
We've only got a few more minutes, so if anybody has more questions, we can proceed quickly. Or, we can thank Peter for now, and have him, have Bruce come in, and then, after Bruce, then we'll open it up to public comment. You have to keep it quick, because he's got three minutes now.
This is super quick. If you, if you had a magic wand, and literally, you could shake it and make something happen for Fairfax, that you don't have to dive too deep, but what would it be? Like, what do you see? What's possible? And let's say you had unlimited resources.
I would love to see, two things. I would love to see this pace, the property-assessed taxes that you can use to finance, energy efficiency, water efficiency. I'd love to see that happen in a big, big way, because I'd love to see that happen in a big, big way because I think that's a great way to help homeowners move forward with energy efficiency. I invested a lot of money in energy efficiency upgrades with my house as well as solar upgrades. I'd love to see that happen so that we can really capture those savings economically for, to create alternative energy. I would love to see the possibility of the town being able to provide fiber-optic broadband service and cut the cable from Comcast or happen maybe at a countywide level. I think that there are a lot of, that would be a great public service if we could provide that. And those are a couple of things I'd like to see. I'd like to see acquisition of more open space. I would love to see more development of pedestrian walkways. I'd love to see more infrastructure for public transit, for bicycles, to help get people out of cars. And to be able to give people the opportunities to really, to reduce energy consumption and so forth and also foster a sense of community. And I think all those things can be done, especially with respect to getting people, you know, if we can get people out of cars, get people commuting, walking, the more engagement in the community, that helps create a more human scale for cities and make cities more livable.
Well, thank you, Peter. Would you mind going outside and then having Bruce come in?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor? Madam Mayor? Me? Hi. I was keeping the time. For some reason, our time clock isn't working, so I have used my cellphone and I'm starting, I set it for 30, and I'll just remind you maybe at five or 10.
Yeah, okay. What I also, what I also did was set that, I wrote down the time that we started, so I was kind of paying attention to, but that'll be good. Thank you.
So would you like me to remind you at a certain time?
Yes, that would be good in case I lose track.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Bruce. So you have to pretend like you are a bandleader or a singer, and you get to hold the microphone.
Okay.
And you have to hold it really close to your face, otherwise it's not, it doesn't work. Okay, with that, I just want to remind you, we have 30 minutes total for any questions we ask and your answers. So just be succinct and complete as possible. And so with that, we'll get started. David, did you want to start again?
Yeah. I asked Peter some questions, you know, in his case, I was very concerned that I would, if I, if he just walked in, I would sandbag him with the questions. And actually, I'm going to ask you these questions, but from, I think I can divine the answers from your prior comments before council on these very, on these very issues, but I'll ask you them anyway. When there's a disagreement, the context, of course, was most of last year. So the question that I'm concerned about is when we, as a community, have a problem, whether it's a single member or a group of people have a problem with the general plan, I'm sure there are a number of avenues that one can go forward with. And the one that I tend to think is the most logical is that the general plan process under state law allows you to amend the general plan four times a year, every year, until the sun falls out of its orbit. And it seems to me that that's a very inclusive way to get the community involved in the process. Comes to the planning commission, it comes to us. In the alternative, we saw that some members of the community, two former council members, brought forward a, went, the referendum process, or I might refer to it as the nuclear option. As between those two, when you, which would you recommend to the community that they pursue, should there be a disagreement on the general plan? And for, you know, there should be disagreements on the general plan. It's not written in stone. It's a living, I call it, the constitution of the town for purposes of zoning. And it can't live in stone. It should evolve as we evolve. So with that wordy introduction, amendment process, referendum, referendum, amendment process.
Well, that, I would, I would just say that the general plan as a whole is more than the housing element, which you well know. There's been a focus this last year on the housing element, and that deals a lot with zoning and with our dreams about housing, but there's a lot more to the general plan as well. And what I participated in, as you know, very, for quite a while, was the General Plan Advisory Committee. We worked on every element of the general plan other than the housing element. We were informed as the housing element progressed, but then it's gone through a lot of changes since then. So not to distance myself from it, but just to clarify as to my involvement. I felt like that that involvement, I was honored to be part of that, and I was really happy to be part of a community that would do something like the General Plan Advisory Committee because from my understanding, it's not that common in communities for the general plan to be such a community-based process. So it was a community-based process. Now unfortunately, although, and we, we brought in, we went to great lengths, and I think very successful lengths, to bring a lot of voices into that process, as Councilmember Reed well knows, being on the committee during the same time that I served, including, well, I won't even go into them, but lots of them. We also, of course, held hundreds of meetings, all of which were open and noticed, but it was not that common that people would come to the meetings, not surprisingly, because they're long and tedious. And then we had subcommittees, which were even longer and more tedious, unless you like writing things in great detail. But the, and so, of course, that's an issue in a town's processes. Those people who come to the meetings feel a part of the process. Those people who don't come to the meetings and hear about it afterwards might feel like something was foisted upon them, as one person wrote in the IJ. That's unfortunate. And one of the things we've done this year with regard to the housing element was to back up, back way up, and try to slowly go through it again with everybody now paying very close attention. So that's, that's something that we're doing and that I hope leads at the end of this year to more of a consensus. And I do feel like there's a consensus building in town. I feel, feel like it's coming together. We've started to hear different viewpoints and put them together around ideas like junior second units and small houses and, and covenants against the use of so many automobiles and so forth, that, all of which are complex, but we've got a pretty clear sense in the community that that's the kind of thing that people are looking for. And that's, that's helpful. The housing element in particular, because of the requirement to keep redoing it in order to, which hopefully we will now have an eight-year window in which we won't have to, but having to keep redoing it in a rapid pace, and the fact that it's very technical and is largely done by staff and consultants because it is so technical and has to be certified by the state, which is a gauntlet to run through, that has had, in the writing of it, it has less inherent community process than the other elements of the general plan have had. And is also unfortunately, the one that is right in our face as far as some major questions about how the town will, will proceed. So it's put us in a bad situation, and I'm hoping that this year, we can get through it and we can hear each other and we can work with it. I certainly hope that. As for whether the proper way to proceed when you feel like something in town in general has gone, the general plan or anything else has not gone to your liking, it certainly is anybody's right to follow the various legal paths that are laid out before us. That's why the laws are there. But it's, it's preferable if we can talk with each other. And I really, I even have a little thing I thought I might read later on if I can, but I don't need to. To, to just put forth my dream for this town and my belief that something that this town can do, which is to really follow a creative process. I've been part of creative processes with groups of people in my life. I've been very fortunate that way. And they are just absolutely beautiful to be a part of and can produce results that are not what anybody thought the result would be when they went into the process. And that's what really is just an amazing spark when it can happen among humans, to actually get together and think things through, maybe even starting out from a position of having different viewpoints or with some hard opinions. And through a process of listening, through a process of really trying to get down to what it is that are our real core concerns and try to tease them out and try to find creative solutions. If you can find something that can work together, it not only can avoid the nuclear option, but it can produce a much better result. So that's what I would like to see.
But I don't think you answered my question, which is referendum, amendment, general plan. Which do you go forward with?
Well, an amendment, yes. If we, if we decide as a community that we need to do something different with the general plan, then the best thing to do would be to make an amendment to that general plan through the public process, through, the council would be the ones driving that.
Not necessarily, but okay. Second question, as I also asked Peter. Had you been sitting here for the last three quarters of 2014, you would have had the joy of voting on whether to repeal the ordinance which implemented the central, the highway central commercial to, gee, what you would think at this point, it'd be imprinted on my brain, the, the highway to the central commercial.
Wow.
Had you been sitting here, would you have supported the position of the repeal or not?
At the time, I had pretty strong feelings that we, I was not happy with the nuclear option, as you call it, having to be used. And I felt like it may be a good option for council to have challenged the petition for it having been gotten signatures from people on the basis of what I consider to be some alarmist and some exaggerated information, including an accusation that somebody, staff, council, planning commission, GPAC, I don't know who was being accused, but somebody was actually trying to pull a fast one on the town with the, with an intentional mis-zoning of the wall property, which just is not the case. And I hope that that's understood by everybody in town at this point. I can't be sure. But that's over with now, that's all corrected, but that was part of the reason I think that it was possible to galvanize people to exercise the nuclear option. If, I would have too. If I had, if I had found, if I had believed that I had found that there was malfeasance in the town, I would have signed a petition to stop it dead in its tracks. I would be right there. But there wasn't. And so, at that time, I was pretty upset about the fact that that was what our beautiful town was, had as a process, was this sort of kind of a warfare. Looking back on it now, I think you all made the right decision. And I can only say, maybe you're wiser than I am because you made that decision. But it's given us a chance to step back, and we, we are facing a larger number, the number from HCD right now is larger because of the fact that we're not implying, in compliance with our last plan, which is in turn because we repealed ordinance 778. So that was an effect of that. But the, the bigger effect is that we are having a chance to cool down and to hear each other, I hope. And if that comes out to be the ultimate result, then I would say, history will say that you did exactly the right thing.
Okay, but again, I want to drill down. On the information that you had, if you had been sitting here last year, would you have voted with the prevailing majority or the unsuccessful minority?
At the time the vote was finally taken, I was seeing both sides of it. And I think I was leaning by that time to, as I said, the position that it probably made sense to back up. Lou Tremaine came in and spoke, and, and he said, this just, we just can't do this. We have to back up and, and run through this again more slowly so that everybody can be part of it. We have to bring the citizenry along with the process. And I guess, you know, I think that at that point, as he spoke those words, I felt like I was feeling like that's probably the only option.
Thank you for your candor.
Thank you, Bruce. So Renee, and I know you've got a series of questions. We may not have time for all of those. Okay, great. Oh, were you next, John? I'm sorry.
Either way.
I didn't turn my head. Let's let John go.
I was going to follow this up. It seemed like an opportune time in this conversation.
Okay, go ahead, John. Sorry.
So say it's the 11th hour, and, you know, you have this, we're still on the same subject matter, pretty much. But it could be any sort of decision. It doesn't have to be 778 and all that. But say it is the 11th hour, and you have a deadline from the state saying, you know, you've got to pass this on a certain schedule in order to stay in compliance and jump through the hoops. Yet there are things being brought up in the community or in, in the, in the session that you're in that are, you know, seem like they're legitimate concerns, but at the same time, you've got a deadline and you've got to make the call. What do you do?
I'm guessing that such a situation might include one that's coming before council soon, right? Because you have a deadline to do the next version of the housing.
Yeah, yeah, these come up regularly.
Kind of what you're referring to?
Well, and also looking back at last year, you know, we were in the same situation last March.
Right, right. Yeah. This, the, the speed by which we have to do these, which is because of our need to be, or our wish to be compliant with HCD requirements, is what pushes things through, as well as the fact that we don't have infinite time to sit here and discuss it. So we get a couple hours once a month to talk about these things. Yeah, I would say that, so, so if your specific question, let me just clarify, is your specific question about the upcoming decision which you all face about the-
Okay, let's, let's say it is the one coming up. I mean, originally, I was talking about the one last year, but since they come up regularly and you rightfully pointed out that we've got the same sort of situation coming up, it's the night of the regularly scheduled meeting. You have this on the agenda, you need to make the decision in order to move forward. You know, the HCD has their deadlines. Yet the community is bringing up some legitimate concerns and some things that need to get worked out. You know, say, the deadline is, you know, it's, it's the first Wednesday of the month and the deadline, you know, in order to get staff enough time and everything, this is, you know, you might have a few more weeks to go and staff has to get it ready for that. But you've got to make a decision in order to go forward that. But there's a vocal group in the community pointing out some flaws in the approach.
Well, as Councilmember Koller said, two weeks ago, being in this position that Peter and I are in right now is uncomfortable, but it's kind of mirrors the position that whoever is fortunate or unfortunate enough to be appointed will be in, sitting up there. So I guess in general, what I can, all I can say is I, I understand that when you're sitting up there, you have to make decisions, and you have to make them that night. You can't always table them, and you can't always talk out of both sides of your mouth. So that's, I'm generally a pretty straightforward speaker, even if sometimes long-winded, and you just have to suck it up and say what you think based upon all the input you've gotten, which is probably pretty overwhelming at that point. Does that answer your question, or?
I think I would just add something. I think you asked-
So that's, I'm generally a pretty straightforward speaker, even if sometimes long-winded. And you just have to suck it up and say what you think based upon all the input you've gotten, which is probably pretty overwhelming at that point. Does that answer your question or?
I think I would just add something. I think he asked you, is, given that people are raising issues and you have the deadline, at least from what I'm hearing you say, is that the deadline would be the governing thing and you would make the best decision you could within the deadline. Is that correct?
Well, a deadline is never really a deadline in that we're not all dead if we don't cross the line.
Well, let's just say.
It's just a consequence. And so you're always, you're really making a decision, even, even the decision to meet the deadline is a decision. And you can make a decision to not meet the deadline, but that decision will have consequences.
Okay.
And I think a lot of times that's, that's a severe enough consequence. And also balanced against whether the next meeting, it's really going to be any easier, you usually try to make the deadlines. And I've met a few in my life, so I know. It's a sweat.
Okay, so I want to change course here for a minute.
Thank you.
So I want to talk about the role. Because I do remember when I sat there and I walked up here, the feeling I had when I looked out was that not only, it was, it was opening night of the show and not only did I not know my lines, but I didn't know my role. And that's the terrifying thing. And you learn a lot really quick. So my question is, if you had to make a role description that would come if you got a script, like town council member, what would that role description say? And succinctly, what is the job that you need to get done?
I would imagine it's a balance between a lot of listening and something that's called leadership, which is a nefarious term to, I don't know if that's the right word, a fuzzy term to describe, but leadership, when it's, when it works, is where you synthesize the things you hear. And it's not just about counting, because if it was just about counting, you guys could be replaced with a machine. We wouldn't need you. It's not about counting. It's about something that's a much higher order process than that, that you all engage in. And that synthesizing and maybe trying to reflect back something that brings together the different things that you've heard and the concerns and weighs them and also based upon a knowledge, which the reason we have representative democracy rather than using direct democracy for everything is because you, our representatives, spend more time at this than we, the citizens, usually do. So you've got more information. You go to these other committee meetings and stuff and you've got a lot to weigh. So you put all that together and you reflect back to the community something that hopefully can bring people together so we can lurch on to the next step.
Okay, so I'm asking you this, but I have a little ulterior motive here. If I got a script and it said that as to my potential role, I would be like, are you, I don't understand.
More scared.
What is your, what is your, you know, one sentence, this is the role of a town council member?
To, no, that's, that's a good question. To guide the town toward the best possible future.
Thank you.
Went from being very verbose to very succinct. Hopefully, that was okay.
Thank you. Good question, Renee. If we have time, I know you've got others. Bruce, I, I want to totally switch gears and this is a little more pragmatic. I don't know how much you've studied the Fairfax budget and understanding, we have a lot of things to pay for. And we don't have unlimited funds. We've been very fortunate that the citizens passed Measure J, which provides us a little bit of funding for police, fire, safety, public works, senior and youth programs. We have Measure D, a sales tax measure, which is just for a few more years. So what, given that we have limited funds, what is, what are you interested in working on in the town that you see we could add money to? And how would you pay for it? Because we have limited funds, we're a small town. So how would you pay for, just pick one thing that you have a real interest in, in doing in the town? Okay, whoever has their cell phone on, turn it off or leave the room. Okay, thank you.
Well, as you know, I'm, I think a lot about our longer-term future collectively, which will include, first of all, higher costs for energy, but then shortly following that, I'm sure, really a much deeper understanding that we cannot continue to live the way we live in a lot of different ways. The amount of waste we generate, the amount of driving that we do, the amount of energy and resources that we consume. So getting ready for that, at this point, resilience, community resilience, has become a big part of that conversation. And so I think making an investment, just as I've made an investment in, in our own house here in Fairfax, we put a lot of money and a lot of time into, into preparing our house to where it doesn't use so much in order for us to live there. And we, I feel like that's a gift to my family because it sets us up for the longer-term future a lot better. And so that's something that I would see in town. For example, just one small project would be, maybe not so small, would be replacing all of our streetlights, not only the ones downtown, which we're about half finished with, but with all the ones in the residential areas as well, with efficient LED streetlights, which would also be really nice because they would dim with, they could dim if you, if there was an activity on the street, they could be really nice. So they would be an improvement, but they would also save the town's budget for the indefinite future. So that's an example of an investment that will pay us back.
So may pay us back over time, but in the short term, how would you pay for it?
Well, some of that could come out of town funds just because it's an investment. We now have the Measure J, which, which we've.
Measure J probably wouldn't cover that maybe, but just how would you pay for it?
I would certainly look for grants. That particular thing is something that there's, I think there's money out there for because there's a lot of, of grant money for, for that sort of thing. And I, I would think we could try to get some of it. In order to get grant money, that requires staff time or council time or something. And, and as I said in my application, I think that interns could be helpful in that sort of thing. Putting, putting, again, an investment into our future of trying to figure out how to get grant money so that we can expand what we do.
Okay, well, thank you. And we do have a few more minutes, Renee. I know I kind of cut.
Just, just really quickly, in general, I do think that the town's budget is well-managed.
Thank you. Great, thank you, Bruce. So I, and I don't want to stop anybody else from answering questions, but I know Renee prepared several.
That's okay.
Bruce, I mean, did you have one, John?
Sure, I, I asked this before, so it's fair to ask it for you two. Sometimes you're sitting here and there's a vocal minority that's, you know, certainly packing the room. It may be for something you agree with and maybe for something that you don't agree with. I mean, one of the things that I, I know you've spoken with, about in the past is smart meters. However, there's, you know, you're faced with the decision of what, what to do with that situation. There's a vocal minority, they may well be in the minority and they may not have the support. What position do you take as a council member, knowing that they have some legitimate things that they're bringing up or at least, you know, certainly legitimate to them? You may not agree or you may agree. How do you make sure it's a good decision that you make?
Well, you, you have a gift for finding the third rail, don't you?
Are you, I'm sorry, are you asking about the smart meter issue or are you asking how do you deal with a vocal minority? Sorry.
Well, I, I think in Peter's case, I use that as an example and that could be the thing or it could be something else too.
Well, I'll, I'll speak to that. I think that how that would be dealt with, and I know I have to be brief, so I'll just say how that could be dealt with, could have been dealt with, maybe will continue to have to be dealt with, better is with more education because it's a subtle issue and in my view, not all sides of that issue were represented really at all. And it was an unfortunate time because we were all furious at PG&E at that point. They put Prop 16 on the ballot, they opposed Marine Clean Energy, they blew up a town in the South Bay. We weren't very happy with PG&E. And so it became an us versus PG&E issue, as well as some other issues below the table that we really never talked about. And meanwhile, the vision of where we might go on our planet in order to actually make the, make our modern life work for us was not really discussed. So I think that finding a way to get further discussion out there, which requires some courage when you're faced with people who have their mind made up. I appreciate that. Appreciate the question.
We have probably about two minutes. Thank you, Michelle. All right, well, Bruce, oh, yeah. Okay. Well, Bruce, thank you very much. Would you go out and get Peter to come in and then we'll open it up to public comment? Thank you, Bruce. So we're a little bit past 5:30 and we do intend to adjourn at 6:30. So I will open it up to public comment. And I do want to say, just remember that last meeting on the 14th, a number of people came up and spoke on behalf of a number of candidates. Both of them are here, others had people speak on their behalf. So I just want to remind people, think back to that as well. So with that, I'll open it up to public comment. Cassidy. I think you have to hold the microphone. And you need to hold it close to your mouth or we can't hear you. Thank you. Cassidy Baker?
Cassidy Baker, 145 Lansdale. So I've prepared a little something, it's very short. I cannot speak highly enough about Bruce Ackerman and his qualifications as candidate for town council. His knowledge, dedication, and heartfelt wisdom has for a very long time served our town and community. As a member of the former GPAC, the current GPIC, and the chair of the Climate Action Committee, Bruce has consistently volunteered his time to not only support the many groups, goals, and town workshops, but he has aimed to deeply understand the nuances and character of Fairfax and its residences, residents. I have known Bruce for over two years and was fortunate enough to work with him on the Climate Action Plan. He has a remarkable ability to communicate effectively with everyone and in a manner that promotes thoughtful dialogue and reasonable consideration. Although we already have one of the best town councils, selecting Bruce Ackerman will serve to further enhance the council's decision-making process and the community interest.
Thank you. Thank you, Cassidy. Next speaker? Teri?
Okay, three minutes?
If you could state your name.
Teri Guian, 33 Roca. I'd like to say that as a former member of the Planning Commission, it's, it really is, it's sad that more members of the public don't come to the meetings because it affects everyone in the town. And I don't think they realize the role that the Planning Commission has. That being said, I also think that a member of the council, having the connection to the Planning Commission into the general plan would be very important. We never saw a council member show up at any of the meetings where we were discussing the housing element. And the input that you guys could have given to the Planning Commission would have been helpful as well. It, it works both ways, David. It's, it's, well, you know, it's, if, if you guys had a little better feel maybe for what was coming up, maybe we could have avoided some of the, some of the angst and some of the anxiety that occurred. And I, I feel that Bruce Ackerman has such a strong and broad knowledge of the general plan and the housing element in particular, that he would be a good go-between, he would be a good connection to, if you guys had any questions on what's going on with the, with the plan, general plan, he would be a very, very knowledgeable person to have on the council for that. I also think that Bruce's connection to the environment and his connection, like tonight he was talking about the lighting and maybe going with the LED lighting. I don't know if you guys know, but light pollution is a huge problem. And it kills millions of birds every year. I just read National Geographic article about it. And if we were to put in shielded lighting and do our share as the town of Fairfax to cut down on light pollution, we should set an example for the communities in California. I think we always have. And I would like to see that. And I think that's something that Bruce also would be very supportive of and be, be, I think Bruce would be a good leader, let me put it that way, on the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Teri.
Teri, you will no doubt want to see an ordinance that is coming up next week that includes a provision on light pollution that I've inserted into the document.
Other speakers? Okay, oh, we do have a speaker. If you could state your name.
My name's Cayman Ackerman and I live 17 Valley Road, Fairfax. And actually, I'm Bruce's daughter. So I'm kind of biased. You guys have a tough decision because it looks like Peter's really grounded as well. But I think my father has, well, he, he talks a lot, but he's really worth listening to. So if, you know, you could find a way to, to work with it, I think he's a very wise person.
Thank you. Alexander?
Thank you, that was a great line. Alexander Vinnick, 7 Meadow Way. I don't personally know either candidate very well, but it's clear to me, looking at their history of prior service to the town and at their applications and interviews and comments made by others, that both are well-qualified to serve on the council. And I'm grateful that they're offering to do so. Having to choose only one is a thorny task indeed, but there are a few factors that I find crucially persuasive. I feel that Peter lacks his desire to help move Fairfax further towards zero waste is a very important priority. Also, as myself a resident of the vulnerable Cascades neighborhood, I very much appreciate Peter's interest in increasing our town's disaster preparedness. And most importantly, Fairfax is continuing to tread carefully through a potential minefield, namely, how to help provide truly affordable housing without creating intolerable congestion and without repolarizing our community. Our council's actions over the coming months can either help heal the schisms that emerged earlier or exacerbate them. Peter spoke of our recognizing and needing to embrace the, quote, "subtler nuances," unquote, of challenging issues such as housing development. I also particularly noted his references to the need for collaboration and mutual respect amongst the council members and also with all of our town's residents, and his interest in compassionately helping bring people together. Especially with regard to housing development in town, this kind of approach will be crucially important over the months to come. What matters is not only where we ultimately get to, but also the process of how we get there. I also believe that Peter's eight years of planning commission experience, constantly dealing with development issues, make him particularly qualified to help guide Fairfax through its next steps to facilitate future affordable housing in ways that still preserve the qualities we most treasure about our town. Lastly, I want to remind us that Larry Bragman was elected to the council three times. Neither of his potential replacements will be before November. I believe that in the absence of a direct vote by the electorate, a principle that should be honored is to select the candidate who was the retiring member's first choice. Two years ago, there were two concurrent vacancies on the council. It seems clear that one important factor in ultimately selecting Renee and Barbara and- involved honoring the preference of the departing elected members. Renee being Pam's first choice and colleague in Sustainable Marin, and Barbara being Ryan's first choice and former fellow member of the Open Space Committee. Two weeks ago, Larry Bragman spoke clearly and unequivocally on behalf of Peter's candidacy, and along with all the other reasons I've already given, selecting Peter would most directly honor the votes of our residents for Larry in three townwide elections." Can I have 30 seconds? 30 more seconds? Thank you. "If after due deliberations, our sitting council members are unable to arrive at a consensus selection of one candidate, our Town Manager's report reminds us that a perfectly legal alternative is to maintain a vacancy on the council until the electorate can democratically speak in November's election. So if you're unable to all agree today, rather than force a decision, please continue working together creatively as a council of only four until the November election. Thanks for listening."
Thank you, Alexander. So with that, any other speakers? No? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council, and I want to also remind both of the candidates that are out there that this term expires in November. So it is our sincere hope that, I think, I'm speaking on my behalf, that anyone who is selected will campaign to run for the November term, and if you're not selected, also consider campaigning. But we're looking forward to not just a short-term replacement, but somebody that's willing to be part of this for the long haul. I think both Renee and I went through that process, and I can tell you, it's more fun than you can ever imagine. So with that, let's bring it back to the council, and... Anyone want to speak up first? David?
You know, I came here, let me start it another way. In the nine-plus years that I've had the privilege of sitting here, there've been hundreds upon hundreds of votes, of which the vast majority are, you would see 5-0 and no disagreement whatsoever. And in fact, even of the ones that did cause contention over almost a decade now, you know, most of the ones, if I was on the losing end of it, I would say, well, that was the people's wish, and so be it, and what the heck, there's another 23 things on the agenda. But this one last year, this one grabbed me, because whether it's my DNA, whether it's because I'm an attorney, whatever the basis of it is, I feel, I felt so strongly, and continue to feel so strongly, that when you have process involved, it's absolutely essential and critical that you follow this. So that's why my first question to both Peter and Bruce were about the referendum versus amendment process, and I think if I heard properly, they both answered pretty much in the same way that they would, of course, prefer the orderly amendment process with maximum inclusion of comment, and that the referendum or nuclear option did nothing more than tear this community apart, and I send that out as a message to anybody who might want to do that when we take up this CHCC issue again this year, and move toward a vote in the beginning of '16, as I believe we will. What I am deeply disappointed is that, I believe I also heard from both candidates, and I guess Bruce, I'm particularly disappointed that neither of you would have voted as I did. And again, reasonable minds can always differ, and generally, all it takes for me to get over this is two or three HBO movies after a council meeting and a bowl of cereal, and I can well fall asleep by 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning. This one, I didn't even have that. And this issue is going to come up again, and it gives me no comfort but great fear that we could be stuck in the misery once again if there's any small silver lining, I won't be the mayor, having to sit there, having to arbitrate it. So I am, it was interesting that I think John asked the question about what do you do in the crucible of the moment when you have to make a decision? Well, Bruce, I came here today to support you, and I can't do it, because I asked you a question I thought I knew the answer to, the old lawyer's thing, never ask a question to which you don't know the answer. Well, I thought I knew the answer, and I didn't know the answer, and I think I'm more profoundly disappointed in your answer than in Peter's answer, because I kind of expected that's what he was going to say. I think it's incredibly important on a council, because I have served in different councils. Some of them have been contentious, and some of them have been much less contentious. And I have found the less contentious ones to be better for the town, particularly as we consistently go out and ask for tax dollars, and increasing amounts of tax dollars, and I have gleaned that the community likes to see a council that's unified in its decision-making. So with that in mind, while not wanting to defer a decision, because I don't think that that's the proper thing to do, I want to inform my colleagues that as you deliberate, you can count on my vote going to the majority that you decide upon. And I hope that's clear guidance to you. As you decide, my vote will go with you. If you are a majority of three on this, you can add my vote to it. If it comes down the other way, then I'm going to support Peter's application to join the council, and I would be remiss, I would be very remiss, if I did not say that it's not just because of my disappointment in Bruce's answer, but it's also because I received much communication from respected members of the bar, who uniformly spoke highly of his legal acumen, as well as his fairness and intelligence. I didn't need them to call me up, I didn't need them to send me emails, I knew that already. My hope is that as the process goes forward, and I think, it might have been Renee's question, when you're up here, the calculus changes, the perspective changes markedly from when you are over there, stunningly, even in a small town, and even in a setting such as this. And I'm hoping that whichever candidate garners the majority on this council finds its way to think harder on this issue of the general plan and HCD requirements and potential litigation, and the tax dollars that go into, I respectfully say, to the attorneys who have to defend or prosecute. And that, I sit here constantly thinking, well, that was a nice expenditure of money that could have gone to focus, that is a nice expenditure of money that could have gone to a senior program. And so even as an attorney, I look at the absolute waste of litigation fees, and I don't want to see this when we come down to voting later this year or next year. On this again, I want to see the council speaking unified, and in a way that honors what the general plan says, and honors what state law demands of us. And I'm hopeful that the community itself will understand its obligation, that it can't have everything it wants, just as individual council members can't have everything that they want, and that they have to bend, and they have to be flexible as well. I've taken up too much time, I thank you.
Thank you, David. John, would you like to go next?
No, I don't think anybody wants to go next, but, I mean, this is a...
This is part of the job.
Yeah, it's part of the job, and this is, it's a difficult decision. I know both of the applicants pretty well. I've worked with them both in different ways over the last, probably over a decade. And I think that they both are sincerely heartfelt in what they want to bring to the community and help the community with, and that's all good. You know, I wish I could say I was happy with all the answers that everybody gave, you know, and the... And I asked the same 11th-hour question of both candidates, and I think this is what you were referring to, David. And I guess I was kind of fishing for an answer that I didn't hear, which is, you schedule another meeting, and you keep on talking about it. I mean, you stick another meeting in that two-week period before the time is up, and, you know, you make sure that it's all talked about. You know, that's all I'm going to say about that one, but basically, we have to come together as a community and at least understand what we're disagreeing about, and get it all out there and talked about. It's difficult to rush to judgment, especially when there's an important thing. I'm not surprised that the nuclear option with all of its, you know, to refer to the referendum as a nuclear option, there's various different things that do get referred to with that term, but in this case, that's what that is. It's very divisive for the community. You know, I agree very much, we just, it's polarizing, people start arguing about things that aren't really what the issue is about, and it's really not the way to build our community, it's a way to divide our community. So I'm hoping going forward that, you know, in our process, you know, this year, we'll be doing it again next year too, you know, about something else. We just have to be able to talk about it all and hash it out, and come to some creative problem-solving thing. And going back to the process here, there's a lot of thought that has gone into the general plan, and I really, well, I've been a part of that along with Bruce, putting a lot of, you know, thinking around it in different ways, and it's in some ways an idealistic document, but it reflects a lot of what Fairfax is and where we want to go. And, you know, and while theoretically it may be possible to redo it four times a year, I don't think you can physically do that, but it's important to talk about what's in it and whether we still agree with it. And if we don't go back to the drawing board and start that process, it's a long process, and it's, being a somewhat constitution-like document, it should be kind of difficult to throw it out and start over again. I mean, it requires thought and attention. Peter also worked on this general plan while he was on the Planning Commission, and, you know, while I didn't listen a lot to the deliberations there, I think that it was, well, basically, it was another night of the month, and I'd just spent a lot of time talking about the general plan in general. I mean, I did look at the minutes, and was aware of some of the things being brought up there, which was useful, because then I got up here and got to vote on whether it's a good general plan or not. I think that a lot of things come up in the Planning Commission that are very real. You have real neighbors dealing with a real physical, you know, somebody's got a project or whatever it is, and you're trying to make a call and balance out a bunch of opposing forces or opinions, and come to some creative middle ground where progress can be made. And I think that that experience bodes well for the experience that's here. So, well, I'd certainly like to listen to my other council members and hear what they have to say. I guess I'm leaning a little bit more towards Peter in that respect, because of the Planning Commission experience. Though it pains me to say that, because I like Bruce a lot too, and I really enjoy working with Bruce, and I think that Bruce would also be, make a very good and thoughtful council member. So, that's for now.
Thank you, John. Renee?
Hi, guys. This is really, this is really more difficult than I even anticipated, and I want to thank you before I say anything, for all the time and energy you've put into just being here tonight, and for everything you've both done. I mean, it's sort of endless, and I wrote a bunch of things down just in thinking about your qualities and your service and things like that. But I just want to start, because really, when I was deliberating with myself over the last couple of weeks, and actually, much longer, what I came up with is that really, this really doesn't have anything to do with me at all. Our opportunity up here is to completely separate the personal from the political. It's a very difficult task in this small town where I've worked with, I consider I've worked with both of you, I've certainly worked with Bruce on some of the nitty-gritty, and Peter, I just feel is that we are members of the same community, and I know you too. But this job of appointing someone to fill this seat is of vital importance, because really, this council is about creating a balance of views, perspectives, skills, talents, and each of you brings very different skills and talents. What I think you bring in common is incredible kindness, and civility, and dedication and service. There was one other thing. And respect. And really, those would probably be the most important of the qualities that I would like to see in personal qualities for someone to sit here. I'm just going to read that I asked Bruce about the role of a town council member. So my definition would be that the town council's role is to delve into and study the issues, gather different perspectives from the community, and decode the information in order to engage people. So my job as a council member is first and foremost to make decisions which are best for the town. As I said, separating the personal from the political, our job is to shed light on an issue in order to make it understandable and create a welcoming environment for public input. Being on the council, I see very clearly the importance of having members who bring balance and the different skills required to make informed and difficult decisions. The discussion and policymaking must represent all of the different voices and perspectives in the community. So, Peter, Larry has left a very gaping gap. What happened?
Thank you.
In the, like, nuts and bolts skills of crafting documents, ordinances, resolutions, deciphering, decoding, things that have lots and lots and lots of therefores in them, and bringing them to the public and making them vital for people to get involved. That is a unique and very important skill to bring to the council. Your legal background, your opportunity that you had when you were on Planning Commission to look at what are the constraints of what we are allowed to do, and then how do we push the envelope in order to make it real, and what we as a community want for Fairfax, gives you perspective and hopefully can help when we have to move forward and make the next set of decisions. I feel very strongly that you would fill a need and a gap that is left wide open with Larry's departure. And I think the town does better when it has a balanced, diverse council. So, having said that, I want to speak to Bruce and the qualities and the extreme respect I have for you. And I just put down a few things, just in thinking, because up until this minute, you can't gel a decision until you're really faced with the people, what you've said, what your answers were, and I just, but I did put down some of the qualities that I wanted to make sure that I called out tonight. So I thought about the fact that if there were awards given to one's dedication and hard work for a town, that you would win the awards, but I also realized that you would be the last person that would ever do anything in order to get an award. would be the last person that would ever do anything in order to get an award. You've done it for your authentic love of Fairfax and for what you vision is possible for Fairfax, and you've shown that you're not going anywhere and will drive and push through. Service on G-PAC and G-PIC and the continuing, it is what continues to define Fairfax and the way I think we will move forward in the future, and you know it intimately. You're a weaver of visions and plans and solutions for our climate crisis and for the necessary behavior changes that have to take place in order for us to move forward. All of these things make you an excellent, excellent candidate for town council. My concerns are diversity on the council. I will be quite honest. I feel as though we have to enter an era where people feel represented and where there are different types of strengths and skills and talents that make up this board. And at this time, I do believe that Peter's skills are what is going to be necessary as we move forward. This is one chapter, this is a small chapter, an important chapter, and an important time that we all galvanize again. We really do need, we have hard decisions to make, and I understand that we go into a lull when there's no, when there's no legislation taking place. But we will have to make those decisions. I look forward to those decisions so that we can move forward, and we need to be laser about it. And so I, I'll just, I'll just speak it, I don't know if that's the way to do it, but I would make that choice. And one of my hopes, and I did write this down as well, because I would have both of you sitting here if that was, you know, that sounds a little bit like I'm part of a youth organization here, but I truly would. And one of my hopes for Fairfax is that we can revise the role of the G-PIC, because the G-PIC is the General Plan Implementation Committee, and we need to get some implementing going on. And that role would allow Fairfax to truly benefit from Bruce's action-oriented approach and passionate work and actually move our general plan forward. So my vote would go to Peter for tonight with heartfelt, utmost respect for everything you've given and you do give, and hopefully, you will keep on giving. So, thank you both.
Thank you, Renee. So I want to say, as I said last time, we have an embarrassment of riches, and I think Renee said it right, this is not about personal, it's not about friendships, it's really about who is kind of the best fit for the council at this time. I think that one of the things I would have liked to have hear is the role of the council members to represent all the citizens in Fairfax. And so it's not a faction, it's not a particular group, and that's what's really the challenge here, is that we hear from a lot of folks, and there are specific groups in towns, but it's trying to weld that together. I would also say one thing I would add as far as the deadline is, I think John's absolutely right, is you squeeze in another meeting, but sometimes you have to miss the deadline. And those decisions are very difficult to make. What we went through last year was very difficult for the town as a whole, and for us personally, it was very difficult, and I think all of us really struggled through that. I wasn't in it for a while, but I do want to say one thing on behalf of, I know, I think Peter said it best when he said, it would have been preferable to go through the general plan amendment process, but that what we did is find the best way to move forward in a deliberate process. And I want to just say that despite the negativity posed by the referendum process, it is the democratic process. So people have the right to use those options. I'm hoping that this year, we can move forward in a civil way and have people engage early, and where there is disagreement, we can find a way. And, you know, maybe that's Pollyanna-ish. But I do want to say, both of you, I respect you highly. Bruce, I think in the Climate Action Committee, we can move in a really strong direction and with your leadership to get us to really get to lower those greenhouse gas emissions credits in the town. I think we're moving in that direction with the new focus. And so I think your leadership is really important there. I will also say, Peter, you know, Renee touched on that Larry left a really big gap, and there's a lot of work to do, and we need to move forward and hit the ground running. And while the planning commission is not the town council, having sat out myself not as long as Bruce, it is kind of a good training ground to hit the ground running on some of these real thorny issues, because you're getting citizen engagement and trying to meld those issues with some pretty difficult things. Some of the things are about individuals, homes, but there are bigger policy issues as well. So you're able to hit the ground running, having had that eight years of experience. I also heard from many folks on behalf of Peter in the last meeting, but also by email, members of the bar, other members of citizens in Fairfax, and someone in London who served with Peter on the executive committee of the Sierra Club. So Peter brings a lot of years of dedication to environmental issues, to working through some of the thorny issues in town. And I do feel he's best poised to hit the ground running and work with us this year on some of the more difficult things we face. And so I would say also, more about Peter, is that having worked with Peter on the planning commission, he does his homework. He was always out looking at those properties. He was always reading very carefully the details of those planning commission plans and reports. He was able to weigh the various sides of issues, I think, very fairly, and helped us really come to some decisions that sometimes could be fairly unpleasant. So I want to thank Bruce for his participation in this process, and I think Renee and I can, you know, have a lot of empathy for what it's like to be going through this process. Thankfully, this time, it was a lot more civil than it was during our time, and I think we kept it at a professional level, and people who spoke on behalf said positive things on behalf of both of you. So I do want to say I appreciate Bruce coming forward and stepping forward and continue to dedicate time and energy to this town and his smarts, which not everybody's got that. I will say Bruce is the master of Excel spreadsheets, keeps wanting to make me read them, and I keep refusing, but Bruce is quite a leader for many things for our town, and I hope you'll continue to do that. But I do want to say that, Peter, I would like to support you for becoming a member of the town council. So with that, maybe we should call for a formal motion? We need a motion.
Make a motion, Kay.
I'll move Peter Lacks to be appointed to fill Larry Bragman's seat on this council.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I do want to say, David, I think you're most gracious in your discussions about keeping the council together. Really appreciate that, and I think that's our goal, to all work together in a positive fashion. We may not always agree, but we can work together. So with that, I think we have, now we have Peter taking the oath of office. Thank you.
So I am going to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye, Peter Lacks.
Aye, Peter Lacks.
Do solemnly swear and affirm-
Do solemnly swear and affirm-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic-
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation-
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully-
And that I will well and faithfully-
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties-
Upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you.
So, Peter, why don't you join us up on the dais? And I would like, but quickly come up, because we're going to adjourn, but I would like to adjourn in memory and honor of one of our Fairfax residents. So when you get up here, I'll do that. Okay, so I would like to adjourn the meeting in honor of Kathleen J. Hale. She was a Fairfax resident, resident of 42 years. She lost her battle with lung cancer just last week, and so we're sorry that one of our residents passed, and it looks like there will be a memorial service soon. So thank you, everyone, and with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Do I need a motion to adjourn? No. Okay, thank you, and welcome, Peter.